It is now ten o'clock and we will begin, and I ask that you, if you would, if you would just please join me in prayer and then we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Dear Lord, we meet to serve our community, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, to make decisions that promote the common good. We recognize our responsibility to the past and the future, and the rights and needs of both individuals and community. And as trusted servants, we seek blessings on our discussions today and on our efforts here today. May we act wisely and well. And we just ask God that you would just bless America with peace. Bless the state of Georgia with peace. Bless Henry County with peace. And I pray this special prayer. In Jesus' name and all that agree, please say amen. May we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We will now hereby call the meeting to order. And I now call for a motion to accept the agenda. And the agenda today is a presentation and discussion only regarding the court facility study by the National Center for State Courts. The floor is now open for a motion to accept the agenda.
So moved.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
There's a second. Any further discussions or revisions regarding the agenda? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? The agenda is accepted. We will now call upon our county manager, Sherri Hobson Matthews, regarding the presentation and discussion regarding the court facility study by the National Center for State Courts. And I reemphasize that this is a discussion presentation only today.
Yes, good morning Chair and Board members. As Sherwood has indicated, this is the final deliverable. It's part of the scope of work that was approved by the Board of Commissioners in August of last year. Just to recap, in August of last year, the Board of Commissioners did enter into an agreement with the National Center for State Courts to look at our current court system and determine some future needs within our court system. As a result of the study, they are here this morning to present their findings. But I do want to just reiterate that the Board is not being asked to take any action today. This is just the beginning of probably many more conversations to come. At this time, I'll turn it over to Judge Ben Stuttered, who will then introduce the team.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We appreciate very much your time this morning. I know most of you, but my name is Ben Stuttered. I'm the Chief Judge at State Court. I have been at State Court for nineteen years now. And let me say that how much I appreciate during that entire time the excellent working relationship that has existed between our courts and our county commission. I go to meetings with other judges around the state and hear them gripe about the support that they don't get from the county. And we have never had that situation here. This Board has always supported our courts and recognized the needs and has worked hard to provide for those needs. And so, over the years, our courts have expanded as our county, of course, has expanded dramatically over that twenty years since we created State Court. We've had a bit of a hiatus in the last decade. We haven't had to add any judges to State Court or Superior Court in quite some time. Our Superior Court last grew in 2005 when we went from two Superior Court judges to three Superior Court judges who just served Henry County. We have four State Court judges who served Henry County, adding our last State Court judge in 2008. And State Court, we think, is stable for the future. We're not expecting to add any judges to State Court in the foreseeable future. But we are on the verge of needing to add a new Superior Court judge. In fact, by case count numbers in 2016 and 2017, we would qualify for a new Superior Court judge now. However, the state in doing that, and the state has to approve of that, they go over a three-year average. And so, we're not quite there. But barring some dramatic reduction in caseload, which I can assure you is not going to happen over the next two years, then within two years, we're going to be looking at adding probably a Superior Court judge for Henry County. And we don't have a place to put that judge. We have, we have four courtrooms in our Superior Court courthouse right now. However, that fourth courtroom is continually being used by visiting judges. So you can see, we have Superior Court judges, senior, that is retired Superior Court judges, who come and assist our three full-time judges now, who help fill in and help keep us from needing that fourth judge immediately. But we're going to get past the point where that is an acceptable solution here in the very near future. So for a number of years anticipating the need, our judges have had a working group led primarily by myself and our Superior Court Judge Brian Amaro and our probate judge Kelly Powell, who have been talking about facilities, the needs of our different courts, as well as the agencies that are associated with their courts, our prosecutors offices, the public defender's office, alternative dispute resolution, district court administrator. Last year, with the assistance of this Board, we added the sentence enforcement unit that is now handles misdemeanor probation led by Mr. Carl Brown, who is here. And, and, and we've been discussing how to accommodate all of the needs of all of those offices. The, this Board has been making additions and improvements to the probate court's building, just ongoing even as we speak. To continue to accommodate the probate court in its current location, which you probably know started life as the library in McDonough. The public defender's office sits at thirty Atlanta Street in what started life, a building that started life as a chiropractor's office. And those facilities are frankly substandard. Our judicial center and our courthouse are high-quality buildings, but we're simply to the point where we're out of space. And with the blessing of this Board, as Ms. Hobson Matthews just said, last year about this time, we started a very, a formal study of these facilities with a long-range view of what facilities would Henry County need over the next generation. And we've gone out and we've hired the absolute best experts in the country who are experts not just at architecture or buildings or building planning, but at planning for judicial facilities. These folks from the National Center for State Courts have planned numerous facilities in Georgia and throughout the country using the latest techniques for saving space in judicial facilities. And they're going to tell us about how to design facilities that make the optimum use of the space available. And I'm going to turn the podium over to them, let them introduce themselves, and tell you about what they found about our current needs, our future needs, their projections. I'm hoping that you have the final report that they issued in March of 2017, which includes an executive summary. There's four pages at the front of that report that allows you to cheat and see what the final answer is if you can't wait to read the whole book to get it. They're projecting that over the next thirty years that we would grow from three Superior Court judges to five, that we would grow from four State Court judges to as many as seven, that our other courts, juvenile court, magistrate court, probate court, likewise would probably continue to grow. And they have proposals for you as to how to manage that, both as far as immediate needs, the most immediate need being the Superior Court, and then long-term needs. So Chen Ming, if you want to come up and introduce yourself and David and help the Commission understand where we are and where we're headed. We appreciate your work.
Good morning, Commissioner, and ladies and gentlemen. My name is Chen Ming Ye. I'm the principal court facility planner with National Center for State Court. My background is architectural engineering and computer science. I've been working with National Center for State Courts for thirty years. And with me is our assistant analyst, David Sales. Introduce yourself.
All right, my name is David Sales. My background is in architecture as well. And I've been with the National Center for about eleven years now.
I think, thank you very much for offering the time to present our work. Okay, the work regarding the master planning for the Henry County court system and the facility requirement. And beside printing a big report like that thing on the paper, we also prepare a summary presentation today for your information. And to highlight some of the issue we identify and some of the recommendation, we will present it to the county for its consideration, how to address the long-term requirement of court facility and court system here. Okay? And this presentation will be quite short. And however, I have to warn you, there are thirty slides. So if you have any question, feel free to raise your question on any image or information you have. First of all, just briefly to explain what has been done in this study. I think architectural requirement, we call the facility master plan, is not just architectural. Basically, when we look at this issue, what's the future facility requirement is based on the operation, based on the demographic, and based on the existing physical environment you are in. And to find out what's the best policy and direction as we to address how to deal with the future. And in the meantime, we can sustain the county for continuing best use of its investment, the courthouses, you have already put it there. Throughout the process, and we go through the data gathering, and basically, National Center does work a little bit different. We look at operational base, okay, program first before we develop a space program. Space program, not the aerodynamic or outer space program. We mean building space program to identify what kind of space will be needed and over what period of time, okay? Because we do need to quantify the, 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 the space requirement at different period of time. So that for the county to make a proper decision how to address the facility issue and when to address and how much it may cost. That's the master plan about. However, as we work on the project, beside look at the data, first of all, we use a statistical data to quantify what's a trend may look like. We use a trend-based analysis to project the next thirty years requirement. And so, identify how many people will be working in the system. And then we look at facility, what kind of function do they perform, type of activity, the level of activity perform accommodated in the environment. So we may quantify the space requirement and put the proper size of those individual functional area such as to determine the size of courtroom, the size of office, the number of people. And with that process, we also look at the upcoming technology or improvement of the court system we may see in the futures to see what opportunity to help to justify the efficient allocation of space rather than just based on space requirement, but look at operational improvement and also that anything to efficiently the process and improve the service. And at the end, we try to see with all those space requirement, how to implement that and try to put the price tag on each option. And that's the process we do. In general, basically, there are five courts in the county court system in Henry County. And four of those are pretty much based in the central business district downtown McDonough. And however, in two buildings, one is the Superior Court building, the other one is the Justice Center. And the probate court, which is currently stay in a separate building outside the downtown courthouse complex. This is a general layout about what's the current status we have, okay? We do have about fourteen point five FTE, full-time equivalent headcount of the number of judicial officer, judges, of all the five district, of five different court system. And with the total staffing, including the judges, is about two hundred fifty eight point five FTE count. And many of the court judges, some of the court judges, you can see that are part-time judges. And however, Superior Court, State Court judges are all full-time position. And with the part-time judges in the, in the juvenile court and magistrate court. As we look at some issue, we try to address architectural. And we try to address the site, okay? Because at the end, we want to tell ourselves what are options to accommodate all those space requirement. Can we accommodate that in the current location or do we have other option? Other location, we want to address that. In addition to that, we try to address the functionality of the existing facility, which you have been using over the past many years, understanding the two buildings were built at different time and era, okay? So some of the functionality are quite different than today or than maybe in the future. We need to address the functionality of individual facility and see how those facility can be sustained in the future time as we consider any expansion issue to address that. And also, we sending our court technology expert, people with a background in court administration, to come into the court and visit the facility and talk to the judges to understand some of the perspective from the user group and try to building this future planning issue. And this is pretty much summarize what's the process of the master plan based on quantitative analysis of workload, demographic trend. And so, we can quantify, build up such a projection model to quantify the future possible range of growth may be. We're not saying we're a fortune teller, but we can give you a range of the possibility of how the future may lay, okay? And then as a planner, we try to find the most appropriate, proper, okay, value. We call that planning target, to plan the growth rate and then try to address what's the implication of staffing will be in the system, in the expanded system over the next thirty years and what's a space solution will be.
All right. As Judge Stuttered mentioned earlier, that Henry County has seen extensive growth over the last fifteen years. Population has grown about eighty percent between year two thousand and two thousand fifteen. So long-term, what does that mean for the county? Information that we got from the Governor's Office of Budget and Planning suggests that population growth will continue at this higher rate, about seventy percent over the next thirty years. So we're looking at a population that's somewhere around three hundred and seventy-two hundred thousand. And that's our, that's our population base for the services that are going to be provided by the courts. Looking back historically at the case filing changes that have been entered into the five various courts, you can see that they've all changed at different rates. Magistrate Court increased about ten percent in new filings, while Probate Court increased one hundred and thirty-one percent in new filings. Juvenile Court saw a decrease of about seven or eight percent, which is pretty typical kind of nationwide that we're seeing with juvenile courts. State Court has seen pretty healthy growth of almost ninety-four percent and Superior Court at forty-three percent growth. So you can see each of them have different dynamics and different responses to this population growth. And so, we look at the historic trends in case filings and population, and what are those relationships? And what might those relationships look like in the future? And so, we look at each court type individually. And we broke down between each major case type within those courts. But as Chen Ming said, we look at kind of what's an acceptable future growth range long-term for the, for each of these courts. Long-term, what we're looking at for the Superior Court is about forty-five percent growth into the, by year twenty forty-six. Using a similar methods, we look at State Court, continued high growth of, on average, about one hundred and twelve percent by year twenty forty-six. Juvenile Court has had historically quite a bit of decline. However, we could see some recovery in that case filings. As you see smaller, younger families moving from the Atlanta metro area down south, you're going to see some increases in juvenile case filings, but certainly not to the level that they had been historically. We're estimating about thirty-two point seven percent growth over the next thirty years. Probate Court certainly is one that is increasing quite a bit. We still anticipate about one hundred and sixteen percent growth in new filings. And something that's a little bit unique about Probate Court is that it's not just case filings being entered in, but also marriage licenses and firearm licenses, which contributes to quite a bit of work for the office staff. So we look at those as well. So looking at those two groups, we can see that marriage licenses probably will increase about thirty percent on average. And firearm licenses has had kind of an interesting growth trend over the past. And we're seeing about another hundred percent increase on those. So that'll greatly impact the court staffing on that end. And lastly, we look at magistrate court. We estimate about almost eighty-eight percent growth in new filings for the magistrate court, also understanding that there could be some future shifts in terms of traffic filings where they're filed with other, within other districts and handled by the courts here in Henry County. So what does all of that mean in terms of how it'll impact the staffing? We looked historically at this caseload per judge ratio, not only Henry County, but like-sized counties around the state. And understanding that each court functions differently, we can at least understand there is some consistencies of when a judge may be appropriated by the state, even on top of the state's weighted caseload studies. So we look at those ratios and develop a threshold of when you might expect a new judge to be sat. And we can see, starting today with three Superior Court judges, over the next thirty years, you could see as many as five. State Court judges currently have four and with a future growth of up to seven. Juvenile Court seeing one full-time and two part-time judges. Long-term, that should be able to handle most of the growth in new case filings. However, you may see a shift of those part-time judges becoming more full-time. Magistrate Court as well, we're seeing quite a bit of growth. Currently have three point five full-time FTEs with three full-time judges and the four part-time judges. You see a full-time equivalence of about five for that court. And Probate Court with some growth in support staff and attorney staff for them, we could see the probate judge maintaining just one judge. Long-term, for the total court system, including all departments associated with the court, we're seeing growth of up to three hundred and eighty-six total positions by year twenty forty-six.
I think before we go to the next page, trying to explain for this, in this projection, the number of judges, basically, just like David explained to you, is based on the projection model of the new case finding coming to the court system. That's the raw data, that's the same coming to our door. And as regarding how many, how much resource we need to process that many demand for serve, much demand of service. As David explained to you, we use a different comparison data to try to find out the average number of cases individual staff or individual judges in each court may be able to handle by references of the past history over the past ten or fifteen year, what's the average, also compared to other comparable county with the same jurisdiction, okay? So we can identify that threshold that could be divided by the, could be divided by the number of cases, raw cases coming into the court. That coming with a range of possibility, then we pick a target range, target planning position for that. That's the result of that. And in summary, okay? However, since some of the judges in the Nebraska District Court are part-time judges, we, they share courtroom, so we factor that into the space requirement consideration and give you a summary. Right now, if you look at the number of courtroom we have in Henry County, about thirteen of them are variable sizes. I think the courtroom in Justice Center are more standardized because the latest version of courthouse design, so the courtroom are of the comparable sizes. But in the Superior Courthouse, that is all structure it was designed at the era, okay? That was not uniform standard observed. That's why the courtroom sizes in the Superior Courthouse are different from each other. Altogether, we look at the two building with four courtrooms in Superior Courthouse and also nine courtroom in the Justice Center. Altogether, thirteen of that. The probate court is located in a separate building. It actually doesn't have a courtroom inside. It has a small hearing area, but it's an enlarged office area rather than courtroom. As we look at what's the solution, what's the space requirement, we try to standardize the space requirement based on the actual utilization of the space and also consider the latest modern courthouse design standard about typical courtroom may be. In the meantime, we try to introduce uniformity as you consider building future courtrooms, okay? So they can, over time, they can be interchangeable used by different user group, okay? In the court system. And the other thing, we look at the space issue about expandability. What are the site situation we have to deal with? And which side we may need to consider, especially we are in a very congested downtown McDonough, okay? And traffic is as good as you can expect. And however, the site is restrained to certain extent. So we want to see the limitation. But in the meantime, we want to see what is a feasible solution to address that. So this is just give you a quick glance about what do we mean, do we mean latest courthouse standard? The latest courthouse standard implemented zoning control, different space zone with a different access circulation system and between the public, the user group, and also the inmate. And this diagram roughly show you some of the detailed requirement about what's a typical courtroom floor may look like. And yes, your building, okay, in the Justice Center is pretty much consistent with those latest courthouse design standard with separate circulation hallway and also with access control and security. But for your Superior Court, it's a different story just because it's, it's a different, building are different vintage, okay? Component, and it's a little bit complicated. That's why you spend lots of effort trying to secure the building. And there's, when you deal with less efficient facility, you make it up with additional resource to safeguard the building and also control the use of the building. That's the reality we had to face. And this is just three dimensional, okay? Let's go on to the next one. So what's the future we have, okay? We first examine the current site. The old familiar, this is your downtown central business district in CBD, okay? Where the judicial center and historic courthouse are located. And you have a new addition, that's a two-level parking deck right across from the new municipal court building. And the site where currently being used by the court are just this block plus this area owned by the county, okay? And right now, the two separate buildings- And right now, the two separate building, each has its own prisoner delivery system. That mean the shared department is responsible for transportation of prisoner coming from the jail, the detention facility right next to here. And they have to be delivered through a different entrances, okay? Into the building. That's one of the major cost issue you have to deal with, with a separate facility and separate support structure you have. So we look at the space requirement and see what's the future may look like. Looking at the, the projected growth of the many a courtroom we are dealing with, we're talking about in thirty year, we will need seventeen courtrooms, okay? And with small number of people in the support function and also more judges in individual court. We're growing the space requirement from thirteen courtroom to seventeen courtroom combined, okay? In whatever space arrangement. So we look at the downtown, can we expand outside? This is the existing Superior Courthouse. Yes, we certainly can, can build a new addition to add more courtroom to that. And however, in the meantime, as we address that, we also need to deal with the secure parking for judges. We also need to deal with prisoner delivery, saddle pool and holding facility. But yes, on the side, we certainly can build a, a small addition to that. And this is the first phase that we will recommend if we are looking at downtown option, okay? You may want to consider the, the first expansion would be building addition to the existing Superior Court structure onsite, okay? To address the new parking requirement and also prisoner delivery system in addition to adding new courtroom. As we look at the new addition of this structure, that will free up some of the space so we can accommodate the relocated probate court from the independent building into this structure. And second, the second phase of that, based on the projected increase of judgeship into the limited jurisdiction, we foresee the possibility, the long-term solution after ten year, the county may consider building an addition to the existing Justice Center, okay? To accommodate the increased number of judges in all those three other court plus the support staff. And also justice-related agencies such as the District Attorney's Office and Solicitor General's Office and the Clerk's Office on each court. And if we, with doing that, we certainly will increase the occupancy load on the CBD. And one issue is we will also lose some of the parking space. So we will suggest, as you consider the two-phase construction, in certain time, you need to build additional parking deck. Because the current parking deck is almost full. And we do have problem during the jury day and they park everywhere, okay? Expecting the future increase of staff working in the court system in downtown, we need to get additional parking structure onsite. And this side is also owned by the county currently. So there are three structure onsite, we're looking at it. And the, the cost estimate for this small addition is probably around fifteen million dollars, okay? And the second phase of structure will cost probably seventeen to eighteen million dollars cost. And the parking structure, however, the one, the big ticket item is twenty-five million dollars. Sorry, sorry. So, okay. Yeah, yeah. Let's go fast. And this shows some of the detail of how the site could be expanded, how the addition could be built, and how does it connect to the existing structure and the new occupancy requirement. And that showed the new addition, a three-story structure with the ground level will be the secure parking with additional courtroom on top. And then the probate court can move into the historic courthouse, original structure of the historic courthouse by itself. It's a self-contained operation for all the probate court staff and our cases, okay? And this just show a, a new addition to the Justice Center, how the space could be reused. With additional courtroom and also some rearrangement of the circulation system literally. The total price tag, okay? By today's cost is about fifty-seven or fifty-eight million dollars. And this are today's cost estimate based on different level of construction requirement and different remodeling requirement and also separate cost, unit cost for different kind of structure. And like a parking deck is the current market rate for this parking deck structure. And second option is, there's been lots and lots of expect, speculation because the downtown traffic situation. And so people would ask us how you can look at different option, okay? That can offload some of the occupancy intensity in downtown. And which mean reduce the use of, of the current site over the next thirty year by relocating some of the function, okay? Away from CBD and to a possible new location. One of the location being mentioned is around this area at the golf course, okay? By the jail. The advantage of that, probably the reason being raised is that should provide a more convenient prisoner transportation between the jail structure and the new court. So we look at that option and try to see, if that's the case, yes, we probably can reuse all the two structure in downtown CBD to keep all the courts except the Superior Court, okay? Or onsite. In doing so, you just change the current occupancy without building new structure. And so probably we may not need to build additional parking deck. And but we just try to remodel the existing building to suit the future operation and reuse of space. And that requirement certainly can, can save you lots of money internal construction because you don't have to build a huge parking deck downtown. However, it also brings a different practical difficulty in operation. Because here in McDonald's downtown, the central business district, the court system is the anchor. And lots of system was built around it. And that's over this many year, the court being in downtown. Everybody look at, that's a government center, okay? For, for justice and lawyer practice around this area. And people know if I'm going to downtown court, that's where it is. Instead, trying to differentiate what's the downtown court and what at court by the jail, okay? And most importantly, if you look at this option, it moved the Superior Court and the District Attorney Office to the jail side, okay? That really, in my opinion, that creates an issue, not just because the access issue, but also that confuse the public's perception about what's the role of the court. The court need to be impartial, at least in the perception of, of the public. So it's not just, has a such close relationship with the jail. And to move the court next to the jail, some people argue that will bring efficiency of transportation. And my question is on two costs. First of all, it temper the image of the impartial justice system because everybody come to the court, they are assumed innocent before the final verdict being given. Secondly, with the close association of, of the court with the jail, people argue that brings a transportation efficiency. But if you really look at transportation, right now, there are not a video conferencing being used in the court system to reduce the physical transportation and movement of prisoner from jail to the courthouse and also housing in the courthouse. That's a different solution, technology can help to address, okay? We set requirement for, for the new, new building in, in downtown, in, in jail side and remodeling of the existing facility. We're pretty much trying to rearrange the space requirement over there. And that's some of the detail analysis of how the space can be accommodated. And finally, as I explained at the beginning, the new structure obviously can meet all the new requirements. And but that's just the structure for the Superior Court, the Clerk of Court and the District Attorney Office. And the new building, based on square footage required and typical construction unit cost, we estimate the cost will be around thirty-six million dollars range, something like that. That's some of the concluding analysis of the space requirement and the possible fiscal solution to address the implementation issue.
Thank you. Okay, well, we've heard the presentations and thank you again for walking us through that and the presentation. At this time, we'll just open the floor for any questions or comments from the board. And this is to you as the presenter and even also to our county manager at this time. So are there any questions from the board? Okay, let's see, let's see Commissioner Barn, then we'll go to Commissioner Holmes.
Yes, could you go back to slide twenty? The State Court building there, at one time, we looked at the right-hand side of that, adding to that and building a building there.
Here?
Yeah, right there where a little pizza place used to be, that building right there. There was some conversation about adding on to that building. And can you put another floor on the State Court building?
A last floor on top of it?
Yes.
Adding a floor on top of the existing structure. At this time, if I look at it, there are certain difficulty for doing that. First of all, during the construction interim and the construction noise and vibration pretty much will affect, okay? All the operation in the floor below. And I think when the noise and vibration, we saw that in many project, that will pretty much affect when you can build it. That's one thing practically used. So you got to be in a night construction. But in the meantime, you get all the dust or something like that. The cost will be very, very expensive when you do night construction. Secondly, the, the current system we have here, for example, if you look at your elevator, okay? You have several elevator in the structure and there are machine rooms on the rooftop, okay? When you build additional floor on top of that and all the existing mechanical system will be redone. And your elevator pretty much need to cut off and add and move the mechanical room, erase the mechanical room one floor up. And that pretty much shut down the entire building for extended period of time. And that's one issue.
What about the, the building on the side of this? About going that way, going east with the building?
On the side of it, yes, that's possible. And we certainly see that the floor plan we have for this. If we look at this structure, that's a existing Justice Center. If you add on to that, yes, you could do that because when you do that, you pretty much extend the public hallway corridor, extend it further. Yes, you could do that. And however, when you look at the prisoner circulation system, I don't know whether there's a basement level or corridor, there is a corridor. There is, right? So it goes this way and that's the holding cell area. It move the prisoners through here and also deliver them up from this two separate elevator. When you add one, yes, you certainly can extend that all the system horizontally. Yes, it's a possibility.
Yeah, and then you could actually go up to a third floor there, I guess, this is a new building?
In the new building, you certainly can make it taller, okay?
The parking deck, the existing parking deck, how many floors of it? I know we got two now, but the existing parking deck, can it go up higher? The existing parking deck?
There was a discussion about structure, whether it was made to add one more floor? Yes, I, we heard about that, the structure, when it was built, there was provision for adding another floor on top of it.
And how many parking spaces would that be?
We do have an estimate, a number of parking spaces.
Yeah, our new parking deck, we estimated about five hundred and forty cars would be built on that structure.
I can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. So our new parking deck, we estimated spots for five hundred and forty cars. In terms of the existing structure, I think adding one additional floor is still less than two hundred spaces.
Two hundred?
Yeah, so it still wouldn't be quite enough to accommodate the future growth on that side either.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Holmes?
Yeah, I, I agree, there is a, a significant need to improve the court facilities as well as some other facilities here in Henry County. I've walked through the courthouse on numerous occasions and it's embarrassing to see all the cases that are sitting actually outside the courthouse in the hallways waiting to be heard. So as a first-class county, I think that we need to be trying to move forward on improving the courthouses as well as other facilities. And my question is, how are we going to move forward to, to fund this project? I mean, these are things that need to be done and planned now. However, you know, as a board, as a board, we have not been thinking proactively. But in this particular case, there is a, a need to really take this serious, especially with the, the anticipated growth in the future.
Commissioner Holmes, I totally agree with you in terms of future needs. And the courthouse study is obviously one piece of the bigger pie. We have a lot of needs internally at the county level. And while we're looking at the courthouse, we also recognize that we have other bigger needs in terms of consolidating a number of our departments and recognizing that we are growing as a community. With anything, we have to look at all of our options in terms of financing. And obviously, this would, we would have to look at financing to do a project of this magnitude. But I certainly would ask that before we jump into this, we need to look at the holistic picture and let this be a component of the bigger pie.
What financing options are we considering?
We have not considered anything at this point. This is just the presentation, we haven't looked at financing. This is not included in our budget, but it is something that we're going to look at going forward. But what I would-
So what's the purpose of this meeting?
One of the final deliverables for the, for the consultant was to do a presentation to the Board of Commissioners. So this will finalize their scope of work so that we can close out this project. But it will not go away. We recognize that this is an element of our long-range plan. And one thing that we've been looking at at the staff level is developing a scope of work for an entire master plan for all of our facilities, not just our court facilities. This will have already been taken care of, so we'll have this information to use as part of the bigger plan.
So in terms of timeline, timeline, we're looking years out from today?
Well, in terms of timeline for a master plan, we're looking maybe in the next three to six months to get something out on the streets in term of, in terms of an RFP. But realistically, when you start talking about something of this magnitude, yes, sir, it's probably going to be two to three years before we even begin the process of looking at anything for the courts.
Okay, other question from the board, Commissioner Clemens?
This is for the consultant, I appreciate the cost analysis that you gave us for the expansion. My question is in reference to the expansion and the fees that you gave us. Did that include any new land purchases or are we using our existing buildings that we have? Because I looked at the, I think the first zero to ten was only like fifteen million. So are we looking, is, does any of that include land purchases?
Because the phase one counts as to build on the county-owned property.
Okay.
And this is a new parking deck in the- And there's a new parking deck in the second phase, also owned by the county already. So we are not including any new land procurement process and the cost in that, because so far the plan doesn't show we need to do that.
So the county owns sufficient land already to do this expansion, and that's just, I just want to make that clear for the record. Thank you so very much.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other commissioner? Okay, Commissioner Barn, did you have something? Commissioner Prince and I have something to ask as well, so Commissioner Barn, okay.
I just got one other question. There's been some discussion about utilizing 40 Atlanta Street, that property. I didn't see that in y'all's report. Did y'all do anything about 40 Atlanta Street?
No, I don't know that one. Where is that? No, I don't know that one.
We did look at other buildings that been used for county program, okay, support program, different offices. And I think those are much smaller scale in terms of architectural to accommodate any of the growth. But we didn't look at other site beyond this site and also some other office site.
Okay, very good. I have a couple of questions. Oh, Commissioner Prince, then I'll go. Thank you.
Guys, I appreciate you coming in, and I'm a civil engineer, so we're going to get into weeds a little bit. Kind of surprised that we were able to actually get the facilities that we need on existing site in that area. I didn't see that coming. I didn't think there was enough room. So I'm a little bit torn between option one and option two. I'm leaning toward option one. I like to keep everything in that same area. I think it's a good idea. My concern, and I don't know if you guys looked at this or what during your scope, and I believe you should have, is traffic flow in that area, it's brutal already, and I can't imagine adding, I mean, we're, I mean, you got, well, that's 540 parking decks, so you're looking at another load of 540 cars. Have we looked at any alternatives for traffic flow to get some movement going? Because the squares, it just shuts down.
Yeah. Commissioner, I totally agree, your observation about traffic situation, when we were on site, we look at that, it takes some time to-
Yes.
-cut across the intersection, something like that. However, and we know that's bad, okay? And we were not surprised it's bad, because every city's downtown, when you have this high-level service, it does stress the current infrastructure. And yes, you do need to see how the traffic rerouting, okay, available at this time. But that's, I think that's a larger urban planning issue and traffic. So for this time, we just studied the requirement, trying to see the architecture implication. But I do agree with you. Any decision being made about the implementation, you should also consider the rerouting of the traffic around this side or some other way. Because right now, you do see this street, lots of traffic coming through, and lots of traffic coming through this way. And we saw that in many city downtown. If you grow big, yes, you have more traffic.
Just as a statement to my other commissioners, I would say part of this, we do need to look at what we're going to do with the traffic. It may be rerouting, it may be one-way streets. We just need to improve traffic flow in that area, because it's going to turn into a parking lot on a busy, busy jury day. And also, where are the judges, you know, the judges need secure parking? Is that on, I can't read it, the new Superior Court, is that where judges would be parking?
Yes, in the new addition to the Superior Court, we do provide under the structure parking, but it's not underground parking, but under structure parking.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And I'll coordinate with the judges to see what their recommendation, where they want to stay in that area. And I, again, I lean toward that area, because downtown McDonough thrives off of having them down there. I mean, the businesses, everything else. So it's a little more important to keep it down there than moving it up here. I'd hate to damage a business in downtown McDonough by moving courthouse over to here. So I'm really leaning toward option one. I realize it's a little bit more expensive option, but we are going to have to address the traffic problems. But everything looks pretty good. I'm actually surprised you were able to squeeze it in that area.
Okay, well, thank you all, my questions and comments and observations. One, we do recognize the growth that we're experiencing, and we definitely want to make sure that we focus on the functionality, the expandability of our judicial centers. I would say that we've got to have a very proactive, comprehensive plan, not just for the judicial centers, but as has been stated already, we've got other facilities that we need to also consider. And I'll also say, whatever option that we have there, there's got to be a comprehensive overlay of transportation impact, whether it's option one or option two. Actually, I'm leaning more towards option two, only because I also think that there is an opportunity to maintain some level of our judicial functions in the downtown area of McDonough, because I do understand the economic impact down there. But I also think about the functionality of others, you know, expansions that we're going to have. I mean, a lot of the investments that apparently have been made by this Board of Commissioners has been based on an expanded growth. That's why we've had discussions about cotton fields and the efficiencies between our jail and so forth. But again, I have not made a final decision, but that's why I'm glad we're having this conversation. There's lots of questions still that are, I've got about a whole page of questions that I probably need to have addressed through this process. But do understand that we've got to, to me, I think we need a short-term and a long-range plan. We talked about the judicial system plan, we talked about needing a transportation plan, and you're right, county manager, we've got to look at an overall financial plan, because I think that's where Henry County has been in actually challenging positions today, because we've piecemealed things, and we haven't looked at everything from a comprehensive standpoint. And we've got to make sure that we're doing the most feasible and functional things. Now, I do understand the perceptions, thank you for bringing that up, regarding the perceptions of having to have some of your judicial functions near the administration building, which is near the jail's function, because that is information that I didn't really have to factor. But again, those are just questions that I have, observations that I have. And you're right, if it's to remain in option one downtown McDonough, it is a must that we have some level of a transportation overlay. Could you go back to slide number 15 for me? Because again, I was looking at some of the growth factors that you had, and even, I think the slide before, it kind of showed the growth and the impact of each of the courts that we have. But if you go back to slide 15, it was interesting to me that we had substantial growth in our probate court, but yet and still, by 2046, we're still suggesting only one probate court. So it's sometimes not today, but maybe, I don't know. I would like to understand that, because it does seem that for each of the courts by year 2046, that we're going to have to have an increase of judges from where we are today. So I don't know, you know, how and when that is to be better addressed, but that is a question somebody can respond to for me. But again, that's kind of, we've got to be strategic, we've got to be proactive. We're not going to be able to please everyone. I think that's the key thing. We definitely don't want to negatively significantly impact the economic benefit there in the city of McDonough. But at the same time, we've got to start thinking about how do we utilize the current resources assets? Because I will tell you, part of what we're asking from the county manager is also, we have so many assets and liabilities right here in the county, how do we begin even thinking about how do we consolidate some of this so that we've got a full picture? And again, it's not piecemealing it, so that we're in a reactive state as we currently are today. So again, glad to hear the presentation, glad to know that we've got a period of time that we need to look at things, but we've got to begin looking at some master plans and comprehensive strategies to pull it all together for the whole county's benefit.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, Commissioner Prince?
Not really off topic, I'm just kind of curious. Did we look at anything for the probate as a temporary fix at all? Because probate's at a point now that, I get a lot of complaints, parking, and I know they are booked. Do we look at anything temporary to do with probate, or is this just, you know, phase one, phase two, phase three?
Yeah, I think in the plan, I think actually probate is one in, is on the priority list.
Yes.
When we look at facility accommodation, in option one or option two, in phase one of each option, they are supposed to be included in the facility.
Okay.
And most appropriate space, we look at that in the historic courthouse, Superior courthouse. And that's to address that requirement, because I feel the existing facility is unsafe.
Yes.
And also, it's kind of rundown.
Yes.
Basically, lots of problem. I remember when we walked through the building, the ground is not even level, and you may trip if you don't watch your feet over there. And also, they don't even have a reasonable hearing room, or not to even mention, they need a courtroom, a requirement for that. Yes, they do have hearing, okay? And we really want to treat the public coming through probate matter, be, feel they receive the respect, respectful treatment as they, we heard their cases and decide their issue. And however, as this planning, probate court need to be in the building, so they can share the benefit in a secure environment like the rest of the court. And they need to be integrated in the entire judicial family, rather than being out there. Even though a large portion of their traffic coming into the facility are for some non-judicial matter, more administrative matter. That's why when we look at the requirement, we try to differentiate what's the need for judicial officer's time? What's the need for the support staff time? And probate court, they're fitting the concept that they need more staff to process this administrative function. That's why in the projection, even though the number of judges for probate court remain the same, but actually, you can see the support staff in the probate increased considerably to address the growth.
Okay, thank you.
And I would like to also make the note that I, it wasn't just for probate court, but also the juvenile court, where they too did not have an increase of judges by 2046. So again, I wanted to make a mention and note of that as well in my comments. Okay. Any other questions, or the county manager, I'm sorry?
Yes, Commissioner Prince, I just wanted to provide some clarification. Since the final report was submitted in March, our facility maintenance department has actually constructed a courtroom in the probate court facility. So they do now have a functioning courtroom. They're also doing some internal spacing constructions that's ongoing, and so we're going to have some cubicles that are going to be added, and they are working in conjunction with Judge Powell. There still lies a problem in terms of parking, and we've had several, several, several conversations regarding what can we do in terms of adding some additional parking spaces, maybe having an off-site location. And we just haven't been able to come to a solution on that. Obviously, one solution would be to purchase more property, and that's just not something at this time that I want to recommend to the board, because we have so many other assets that are out there that we need to look at possibly either getting rid of or figuring out what we need to do with it. But I did want you all to be aware that we have constructed a courtroom in that facility, and we are doing some internal improvements within probate court.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Clemmons?
And to our county staff, I just want to say, I heard, you know, the unsafe and the rundown building that we have over there, we all know about that. But I want to see that we don't continue to just put Band-Aids on these issues. This is a zero to 10, and as we start looking at this, we're a county that has very little debt, and I don't think, we've got positive leadership over in our court system, they're open-minded management that's there, you know, this is the type of leadership that we need. We want to make sure that this is a key part to our planning, and that they don't have to continue to wait. So I would like to not see us put a whole lot of money in Band-Aids and just temporarily doing it. Let's just go ahead and do what we need to do to make sure that we start with this first phase.
Absolutely, Commissioner Clemmons. And hopefully, I'll get this same energy next week. We're going to be bringing to you all some conversations regarding capital. And so these are some of the things that during our budget cycle, we talked about in terms of putting Band-Aids on it, because we can no longer afford to put the Band-Aids. So I totally agree. Thank you.
Other questions or comments from the board? Calling again, any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, well, thank you for your presentations. You have any further comments from you?
I just want to say, this effort represents the greatest attempt at long-range planning for county facilities that I can remember in my lifetime. And I appreciate your desire to do that. I appreciate the chair's focus on that. I appreciate the comments from Commissioner Holmes in that regard. That's absolutely what we need. And so we've tried to present you with the plan for the operation of the courts over the next 30 years. I was amazed and pleasantly surprised when this report came back to see that the phase one recommendation might only cost us $15 million. I know we say only $15 million, but in the great scheme of the actual cost of constructing court facilities around the country, I find that remarkable. I think that with the very bright people that we have working on this, we can figure out a way to do that. Given what the county manager has said about, if we start today, we're looking at a two- to three-year lag time, and given that, we're looking at a need for a new Superior Court judge two to three years from now, I encourage you to find ways, look for ways, and hopefully find ways within the great scheme of all of the county facilities, to see if you can fund that in the very near future, because we're going to need it. I appreciate your time so very much. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, this was a call meeting to discuss the presentation today. So at this time, there was no other further agenda items. We will now open the floor for a motion to adjourn.
Promote.
Got a motion?
Yes.
We have a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Consider ourselves adjourned. Thank you all for being here today.